Gentlemen, slide down a little bit. I'll be starting, slide down in the hallway so it doesn't air too loud.
Alright, good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for coming. I call this a special city council meeting to order today is May 23rd, 2025, and it's 4:10 PM with the club called the rules, please.
Before I do, I'm gonna just read a quick email that Khalil sent, why he's not here. He says, "Good evening, everyone. I respectfully submit this statement to inform the mayor, council, and everyone that I cannot attend the special council meeting scheduled for 4:00 PM. Due to the limited notice and insufficient time coupled with prior obligations related to my interstate job, I am regrettably unavailable to participate. I wish it had been scheduled for 7:00 PM like the regular city council meetings, then I would have been able to attend. I appreciate your understanding and reaffirm my continued commitment to serving the residents of Hamtramck. With that said, Khalil, Councilman Rafi is not here, Councilman Musa..."
Yes.
"...Councilman Sifman is not here, Councilman Mahmoud..."
Yes.
"...Councilman El Samiri..."
Yes.
"...Councilman Hassan..."
Yes.
Mister Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Please rise for the presence of the House. Alright, do we have any community announcements?
No, sir.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone. We don't have many items to discuss today, but it looks like there's no proclamations or recognitions as well, right? Any additions or additions to the agenda? Alright, so, we will start with the interesting part, which is the public comment. But before that, I would like to mention that everybody should follow the rules. When you speak, look at the mayor, no interruption, no personal abusive language or personal attacks. Please be civil and respect each other, no interruptions. If you'd like an extra minute, you can ask the mayor for that. We're gonna stop.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna start with reading off emails. First one is from Hamtramck Command Officers and Hamtramck Police Officer Association of Michigan. Sadly, over the past week, we as a union have been made aware of several allegations that have affected not only the police department, but the city of Hamtramck as well. After speaking with the Ranking Officers Union and the Patrol Union, and the majority were in favor of speaking on this issue. First, we would like to show our support for our current city manager, Maxwell Garberino. Since his return, city manager Garberino has expressed his dedication to not only the police department, but to the city as a whole. His statements have been proven to not only be words, but he has taken appropriate action to better the police department, which in turn better serves the city of Hamtramck. During his tenure as city manager, Garberino has strengthened the police department contracts, which in turn has assisted in being able to hire more qualified individuals, retain our current membership, and raise morale in the department. City manager Garberino has been a big reason that the unions and city have a good working relationship. We feel that in our duty to voice our support for city manager Garberino during this time. Secondly, we would like to speak in favor of Chief Jamil Al Tahir. The police unions are just as surprised as the rest of the Hamtramck community of the recent allegations. Chief Al Tahir has made great strides to mend the relationship between the residents in Hamtramck and the police department, between the community outreach programs that have been initiated, and the transparency that has been shown, just like city manager Garberino, he has raised morale within our department. With the above statements being made, the union would ask everyone to reserve their personal opinion until the completion of the investigation. The union asks the community to understand just because someone in the law enforcement field is put on leave does not mean they are guilty of wrongdoing. Being placed on leave in the law enforcement field is a common practice and by policy to protect the interests of the residents within the city. The union believes it is the duty of the city manager who is in charge of overseeing the chief's position to take these actions, no different than how the chief would be expected to handle an allegation within the police department. As a union, we would ask for a fair and impartial investigation. During the investigation, the union is certain the city of Hamtramck will continue to have top-notch police services, which the residents deserve. If and when Chief Al Tahir is cleared, we as a union look forward to continuing to work under his leadership. Sincerely, COAM and HPOA." Next one is from Lynn Blazi, local resident. Hello, mayor and council. This is absolutely ridiculous. Four of you are under investigation for election fraud. Two are running for reelection even though you don't actually live there, here, and in the process have shown that you're committing tax fraud by claiming homesteads somewhere that you don't actually live consistently. And now your police chief is under investigation for some pretty serious stuff. I've seen the allegations. Instead of doing the right thing and playing by the rules, you all consistently ignore them and make up new rules to your own advantage. I didn't want to believe Amanda when she said that it was the Wild West during her time in office, and truly believed I could make a difference. With all that's going on, I'm incredibly grateful for my choice not to run this time around. Your choice to lash out at folks whose job is to protect our elections and ensure our city runs smoothly is ridiculous, childish, and further evidence that none of you are fit for office or public service. Your childish temper tantrums make us look like we're being run by a bunch of toddlers. Do better and be better. I commend both Max and Rana for doing the right thing and working to put an end to this dog and pony show. And because you guys love to revert back to this argument, these allegations have nothing to do with ethnicity or religion, and everything to do with the law, character, and ethics. Your games affect the lives of those who actually live here, and none of you are doing a good job of being ambassadors for our city, or showing the world how wonderful it really is to be a part of this community. Stop playing games. Thank you, Lynn Blazi. This is from Carrie Beth Leslie, also a Hamtramck resident. I have a job, so I can't be there. Please read my comma. As a person who has had multiple sources confirm to me that the FBI is involved, I stand behind Max's decision to suspend both involved officers while the FBI sorts out the drama. The last thing any of you need, since most of you are under investigation for one reason or another, is to look like you are getting in the way of the FBI. The prudent action is the one that Max took. No one has been fired, but everyone needs to be kept a distance from the city activities while the investigation is going on. Suspension with pay is the proper action. It serves you well politically to not make sides while this is sorted out. I have seen the allegations as sent to me anonymously from one of the involved parties. If there is any splinter of truth to any of them, you do not want to get involved. It is not about a demotion. Many of you want to support someone who has made big changes and has represented Yemenis well, and hopefully at the end of this, you will be proud to welcome the chief back to active duty. However, if the chief has committed a crime, you will look foolish for not taking a step back and letting the law enforcement sort this out. Signed, Larry Beth... Larry Beth... I'm sorry, Carrie Beth Leslie, Ph.D. This is from Miriam Jekylln, two Hamtramck city mayor and police. Chief Jamil Al Tahir is an honorable man. He is a great father and person. I am saddened by these false allegations against him and me. He informed me some time ago not to trust police officer David Adamcheck or enter a car. When I asked why, he stated that I don't know if he's serious or joking, but he wanted to put drugs in a car and arrest you as a way for me to get custody. From then on, I never spoke to police officer David Adamcheck. But Jamil did tell me that he was not a good guy, and that he and the city manager are doing shady things, and to stay away from them or anyone associating with them. I'm not going to speak about my personal business, but I want to clear that Jamil never physically abused me, and we have a very respectful relationship. I have argued with him in the past as other couples, as any other couples. Thank you for listening to me. Also, there was a report taken in ship, and I voluntarily left to see my son because I wasn't feeling good. Thank you, mayor and police, Miriam Ahmed. That's all for emails. I'll start with public. Thank you, yes.
There are some people who said they sent emails. Is that what you have? I've seen that some people not being able to come physically, but they sent emails.
I'll check one more time. Just bear with me. I did get an email, but it was to... it wasn't a public comment, so I'm not sure which one you're referring to.
It was a exhibit. What's the name of the person?
Hold on. Was it a female?
Rafat?
No.
Somebody texted, St. Rafat, and another one, Louis or something.
Today? And they wrote public comment?
She can look for it, which one of the lines is right or not.
Yeah, just one moment. I'm pretty good with that kind of stuff, mayor. And if you want to do your... if you want to text them, let them send them to me and see if I got them in time, I'd be more than happy to assist, but I don't see anything in my emails. Okay. Norbert Rebels? Sir, three minutes?
Hello, everyone. Well, I don't know if I'm gonna go first. How long do we get?
Three minutes, sir.
I've been... I'm 60 years old, and I've been through a lot, and lost everything, and had a bit problem with my roof. No mom would help me. The chief noticed that. He said, "Come on, let's go get some coffee." We wouldn't go with coffee. I come back home, come back home. There's two big trucks in front of my house. And I'm like, "What's going on?" He said, "We're gonna redo your roof." You know, my own family, two of them, who are pretty rich, wouldn't help their dad. This guy used to come to check on me once a week, just to see how I'm doing. And I go inside, come back outside. These guys are tearing off my roof. And I'm like, "What are they doing?" And he said, "You're about to get a brand-new roof." I was shocked. I started crying. Sixty years old, I'm a football coach, and now I'm out there crying. I grabbed him, and I kissed him on his forehead. He pushed me back. I say, "No, don't ever push me back, man." When I grabbed you, I hoped you'd kiss on the forehead. You take it. He looked me in my eyes. He said, "Okay, seriously." And I wouldn't start crying, so I'm...
Thank you, sir. Yekhama Wari?
So, I'm here in support of Chief Jamil Atahiri. I don't know what it is. I mean, this accusation has a good effect on our community, our young people, first and second and third and fourth generation Yemeni-American. The young people who really, we trying to give their education, and we are in a good way. And now this gonna affect not only on the career of Chief Jamal Atahiri, but it's gonna be affecting in our community. All this media here, and I hope they will be balanced and they be fair to our community who try to... our community trying to be emerged with this whole general community in the U.S. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Justin Petrosik? Justin P...
Justin what?
Petrosik? Petrojek?
Justin Petrosik?
He's probably pronouncing it better than I, then.
Is there a Justin Petrosik?
No? Oh, okay.
Petrosik.
Petrosik! Yes. Public comment. He's coming.
Thank you.
Yep, yep, a little bit in the way. That's why we tried coffee.
Three minutes. Thanks, Justin.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. I'm here in support of our city manager. I'm not a... I'm not a well man. Used to be much more well than this. Long time Hamtramckan. And gone to an accident a couple years back, and it took me a while to get back to this city, my home. And still recovering, pretty darn disabled. I don't know Max from anybody. He's not a friend of mine, not a neighbor. But when I got back here, I needed a lot of help with some systemic stuff. Where I first found myself in temporary housing, there was a municipal parking lot that didn't have handicap spaces. And I just reached out to him, and it was fixed like the next day. When I got back into my house, my old flat, the street light was broken, and with my brain injury, it was stabbing into my eyes and stuff. And he fixed that the next day. And I don't know, I had problems with my alley, and trash doesn't get picked up. But every time I reach out to him, he coordinates, and it gets done. And it's a longer list than that. You'll have to forgive me. I just, you know, these may sound like small problems. Like as somebody who's like trying to get back on their feet and like in their home, like, they're very significant solutions for me. And I don't know what this is all about, really don't. But gosh, it would be a shame to not have this person that seems to care, and be able to reach out to them. And it makes me kind of scared for myself, so, that's all.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Lukman Saleh, Hamtramck resident?
Yes. Assalamualaikum.
Salt, salt, maybe salt.
Yeah. Assalamualaikum.
I cannot hear.
Lukman Saleh, lived in Hamtramck with almost 27 years. I love Hamtramck, and I love Hamtramck to be clear, healthy, beautiful, and we know we're all here to serve the city. Even elected officials or appointed administrators. We should respect the law. I'm not here to support anyone against anyone, but we should support the law. Mistakes happens, and investigators are working on it. So, I advise you all to read the investigations, and read it again and again, and listen to the city attorney before you make any decisions. The city budgets is in bad shape. We will not accept anything to make it worse. So, please, read it, make the right decision, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Matt Kiziyali?
Matt Kiziyali.
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 Matt Kiziyali? Is there a Matt?
This way. Right up to the podium.
Mayor, council, how you guys doing today? I just am here to support Max, because at the end of the day, in my opinion, you know, coming to watch you guys, the last couple city council meetings and stuff, these meetings would not run without Max. The city would not run without Max. And while you may disagree with him politically or administratively, at the end of the day, you guys are not the ones doing the work. He is. And who are you going to find to do the job besides him? Nobody else wants to do that job. Nobody else really wants to run for council or mayor. So, why would you guys try to replace him last minute on a Friday before Memorial Day? You know, we all have better things to be doing than sitting here doing this. And because of politics, because of your guys' corruption, you want to get rid of him for just trying to do his job. And you know, at the end of the day, he does do a pretty good job. I might disagree with some of the things that he wants to do, but at the end of the day, you guys can barely even make a motion without the clerk and the city manager coming in here and helping you guys out. You would not be able to even make a motion. You wouldn't be able to legally have this meeting without them. And I just want you guys to remember that. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan Featherstone, also Hamtramck resident. Megan Featherstone.
Megan Featherstone?
Good afternoon. My name is Megan. I've lived in Hamtramck for over a decade. I would like to say the same of you, but I think we all know that several of you don't or are under investigation for not, which is a waste of all of our tax dollars. Every time I come in here, I have to talk about something that you have done to waste our tax dollars. Okay? I may not agree with Max politically, just like my friend, but he's doing his job. I'm here in support of Max and our city clerk for doing their job. Every time I hear about this council, it's a waste of our money. A waste. Shameful. I remember Councilman Hassan, didn't you run on getting rid of the income tax?
You addressed the mayor.
Okay, I'm addressing the mayor. What's up? I'm pretty sure Councilman Hassan ran on getting rid of our income tax like five years ago. What's up with that? I've come here, I don't know how many times, see Councilman Musa taking a nap. What's up with that? I'm not even sure if you, mayor, even live here. Definitely, definitely love people who don't. Definitely looking out for none of us who live here, who pay our taxes, and who deserve better than this foolishness of these people in here. Because you want to use your time and our money to try and further your political career, which for some of y'all, you haven't even gotten out of this room. Y'all are shameful. We deserve better. There are people in this city who have needs that you can't... None of them are being met by this city. And you know that. You know that. And that's why Councilman Hassan is looking at me smirking, because he knows that. Shameful. Shameful behavior. We all deserve better.
Thank you, Evan. Scott Aronson?
Arrington or Aronson?
Aronson.
Scott Aronson?
I'm trying to... just tell him to quiet down a little bit, please.
Hello. My name is Scott Aronson. I'm the owner of the Hamtramck Hostel. This is the first time... I've been a city business owner for about seven years. This is the first time... I'm not a political person. This is the first time I've ever been to one of these meetings. And I just felt it was important that I come to support Max. You know, I don't have a lot of issues with our business with the hostel, it's on Holmes. But whenever I do, and I send a message, you know, he's the guy that cares. And I think it's very hard to find somebody like that. And when you have somebody like that, you know, you should be doing everything that you can to keep them. And so I just, you know, urge you, if that's something that you're not planning on doing, I urge you to strongly, strongly reconsider. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Abraham Al Jahim? Abraham, was it?
Abraham Al Jahim.
What?
Abraham Al Jahim.
Abraham Al Jahim.
Good evening, council, mayor, manager, city attorney, clerk, and deputy chief. First of all, David Adamcheck, the investigator. In January, he said to me and the chief, he wants to rent a car, put drugs in it, and have the chief's wife drive it, and he'll take her to jail. The chief said, "No way." This is my child's mom. I would never do that to her. Well, she's giving you a hard time. She's mental. She's on drugs. He said, "Doesn't matter. You're not doing that to her." Two weeks after that, he asked me to be a CI, confidential informant for the Hamtramck Police Department. And I would work with the FBI, DAA, state police, and Max would pay me. That's exactly what he said. The city will pay you, will make you ID, will do this, and will do that. I said, "No, thank you." Is that why he asked for my ID and my email? A month before that, he said, "Yes, I'm working on it." I said, "I'm not doing that to my community. I've been here 35 years, an activist, and a political activist, and a community activist for 26 years. You're gonna pay me $1,000 after each case. For what? You do your job. You're hired for that, not me." And then to go back during when people were running, Max was putting pressure on Chief Jamil Tahir, not to support any candidate, because he preferred another candidate. Of course, the chief lives here. He can do whatever he wants. And now, yesterday, I don't have Facebook anymore, by the way. Max boasted that the Monroe County prosecutor got the case for you guys already, for the voter fraud. Who's pushing it? I would like extra minutes, mayor. And who's pushing it, and why now? The residency, I've been pushing it for seven months. But why the residency just came up now, the voter fraud came now, and the chief's situation came now? And there was a guy that bought a car from New York, came here, we were right outside City Hall. He said, "Abraham, I want you to come with me to Durban to pick up my car." I said, "I'm not going to Durban." And David pops up with the police car. I said, "David, if you're going to pick up the car, I'm going with you, because I feel safe." When I'm next to a police officer as big as David, he's also investigating for the city. And he was fired in 2003. We would love to find out why he was fired. So, we went, got the car. My son drove it to New York. Yes, my son drove the car to New York. And it wasn't stolen. The guy had a title. The title was signed. So, I don't know what is all this about. You know, they mentioned something that happened in New York. Well, Max wants to bring a company, outside company to investigate. No, Max. We want the state police and FBI to investigate. Not a separate company, not an investigation company, private company. Because we know David has a company. Max has an investigation company, and the third company might be their friend, might do them a favor. We want the state police and the FBI to investigate every little thing that goes on in Hamtramck. Thank you.
Folks, there's no clapping in here. Audience will remain silent.
Angela Haban?
Angela Haban?
Haban.
Haban.
I'm looking through all of them. I just looked through all of my emails today. I did get one from the auto... Mayor. The auto?
Hi, Angela Haven. I live on Plinger Street, longtime resident. I'm just here to speak on behalf of Process. It seems like there's a lot of allegations against the chief and a detective, and I think the right thing to do is what Max has done, and start an investigation and have people on paid leave. No one's been fired. It's a paid leave while we understand what's going on and what's the best thing for the city. I don't want anyone to lose their jobs because of a power struggle or because of misunderstandings. I think the right thing to do at this point is exactly what Max has done in representing the needs of the city and the best interest of the people who live here and all of you. It's embarrassing to be in the news as a city for these reasons. It's embarrassing to be in the news as a city for these reasons all the time. There's a process to be followed when it comes to investigations for wrongdoing in every single line of business. In my job, if I do something wrong, I'll be put on leave and not paid while it's investigated, right? So I think the right thing to do would be to allow the investigation to go through, keep Max in his job, see what the investigation says, and then make the decisions on what to do from there. That's in the best interest of the city. It saves the taxpayers a bunch of embarrassment and you all a bunch of time and money. And it's really the only fair thing to do at this point. So please just keep everyone in their jobs until what's done is done and the right thing to do is determined. Thanks.
Thank you. Hassan, Durban resident?
Good afternoon, everybody. Hassan Ayoun. First of all, Mr. Mayor, you got a Freedom of Information other day regarding Max. Max is not allowed to work for the city of Hamtramck. Number one, it's right here, black and white. You read it, Mr. Mayor. The attorney read it. The attorney sent it to me. The clerk sent it to me. His contract that he has right now is void. I'll tell you why. This was supposed to be disclosed to the public that Mayor could not get it and nobody could get it until I sent the Freedom of Information with a retention letter. And I demanded, if I don't get it, I'm going to litigate. What happened is he hid this from the public. So we're going to sit here and blame this individual because him and David are investigating people, false allegations for a chief of police for twenty-five years from New York City that came to dedicate his life here to change Hamtramck. There was not a punch in and a punch out in the beginning. Guy smoking cigarettes upstairs. And he bought, what's it called? A guy with overtime, stealing overtime. You guys forgot about that. And this guy's going to come here like a coward, sit in here with this right here, comes, works over here, lies to you, does not disclose this. And what's the city attorney going to say? Oh, he has another contract? No, this contract right here is the original contract he signed. He's not allowed to work in the city. He signed a contract, it's right here, his signature. His signature's right here. His signature's right here. I'd like the extra minute, please. His signature's right here, Mr. Mayor. He signed it. He agreed not to work for the city. He agreed that if you, that you guys, he lied to you. Remember that. Lies after lies. It's okay for Max to lie. But if you want to sit there and investigate a chief of police that's dedicated for twenty-five years, that was a captain taking care of over a hundred officers. The small city over here, he wants to come steal. You're not sit there talking about his wife, his kid. This is all David. And David, Max suspended David to make it look, oh, that what's it called? Nobody's talking about David. They're all bashing the chief of police. And that's the problem. You guys have to understand, there's one, two, three, four, five. You make a vote today, get this guy out of here. Because his contract is expired, void. If the attorney's going to tell you otherwise, I'm filing a grievance today against the attorney. If you guys sit there and tell me that the attorney told you that this is not void, it's void automatically. It's a shame that we're going to sit here and bash the chief of police. Guys, wake up. The clerk does her job. And Max is sitting here slacking off, worried about Mohammed, worried about this guy, worried about that guy. But he's not worried about himself for lying. You cannot work here. It's very simple. If we're going to give Max a slap on the wrist, we might as well give everybody a slap on the wrist, guys. Think about it. Vote on it. Get this guy out of here.
Thank you. Sam Alasari?
Mr. Mayor, if I may have a second? Just a point of clarity. That document has been publicly available?
No, it wasn't publicly available.
A simple search, Google search would have provided it. Mr. Ayoun didn't even have to FOI it, but apparently he didn't find it Googling. Further, Mr. Ayoun is not an attorney. He relies on ChatGPT. And that's contrary. I'm frankly kind of disturbed about the slander and things he just misrepresents constantly to this council. But that's not true. Period.
Sam, three minutes?
Mr. Mayor, city councils, as long as you're sitting in the chairs, be clear and clean. And illegal is sitting in the chairs, we have a lot of respect for you. Doesn't matter what they say, it doesn't matter what they acting like, okay? Mr. Ahthari actually is working in the city and all of us actually know. He did a lot of improvement actually to the police department. And we stand with him and we support him. The same thing we are against anyone. As long as we leave the city to run the way they should be run. To be clean, clear, and also to be worth, I mean, to do the best for the city. Not using the tax dollars for hiring for something else is not benefit the cities. We do respect to everyone. We need the city. There is a lot of services we need in the city. So we stand here and we support the mayor to make the right decision. And we will stand to make the city is clear and clean. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mutahar Fadl? Mutahar Fadl.
One more time.
Mutahar Fadl.
Mutahar?
Hamtramck resident?
Good evening, Assalamualaikum. I don't know where to start. I am not with somebody against anybody, but if Mr. Ahthari did any mistakes or fallation, he should be held accountable according to law. And you should not target him because he's succeeded and he's well-known and he's doing his job right. And I hope, and I will say this to Max, that you didn't take this action based on personal thing between you and Mr. Ahthari. And I'm not against you, Max. You are a good guy. You are, you're doing your job right. But sometimes when two city councils like have something against each other, you take one side rather than the other side. Stay out of the politician and do your job as a city manager. We like to have diversity on the police department and on the fire department. This is the first time we have someone from our community and the police department. And we feel he's being targeted. And if he's gonna, the investigation is going to indicate that he did a violation. I don't mind if he be held accountable according to law, but I have a bad reputation with the police department. One time I came because my wife, before the mayor took office, my wife's green card was lost. And I came to get a report. They denied me. They said, no, just go call the immigration. They will send him another one. One time I came to ask for Khalil Al Rafa'i when he was an officer inside. The guy on reception told me he's not here. I'm sorry. I turned around and I called Khalil and he came from inside. One time, one of my neighbor's car mirror got broken. His teenager kid accused me. He called a police officer. And the police came. He knocked on my door. He said, what happened today? I told him, I don't know. He got mad at me. He said, I'll take you to jail. Why? I don't know what happened. Even if he accused me, I still don't know. And then he went and knocked about twelve neighbors to see if he seen me broke that mirror and they told him, no. He came back and told me, work it out with him or I'll take you to jail. I told him, no. It's not about a forty dollars mirror. It is about reputation. And then when I, he gave me two tickets. When I came, he gave me a third one, even though my case was dismissed. So we wanted diversity, but we want everybody to be here according to law and not to be targeted because of his, you know, successful things or his race or his, you know, community he came from or his background. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Petrick?
Greetings, gentlemen. I'm here today as a longtime resident of Hamtramck, member of the city's business community and a staunch believer in what the residents of this city stand for. I'm horrified by the circus that the current administration has turned this city into. I've invested everything I have in this town and watched as outsiders have been allowed to use it for personal gain and political gain. Currently, we have a police chief imported from New York who stands accused of using his power to cover up domestic abuse incidents, adultery, abuse of power for financial gain, and misuse of armed resources. We also have two, probably three council members who don't think highly enough of the city that they lead to raise their families here. And we have four council members who stand accused of undermining the very backbone of our democracy by ballot harvesting and voter fraud. None of these things can be blamed on previous administration. None of these things can be blamed on insufficient cash flow or cultural differences or any of the usual excuses that fly around this room. None of the blame for those things lie with anyone but the people sitting across from me right now. Yet here we are on a Friday evening in a meeting that wasn't really announced during the, via the usual channels, while the very people who are responsible for this situation debate what to do about one person, the one person, who has acted to uphold the law in the interest of the public good. If you take action, it would be the definition of retaliation. At every opportunity, Mr. Garberino has acted thoughtfully, with measured caution, to protect the citizens' interests and ensure that the city operates fairly in accordance with law. Ironically, the only people who take issue with Max are the people sitting across from me and their sordid sycophants and cronies, many of whom who do not understand the law. If you decide to fire Mr. Garberino, there will certainly be a large lawsuit and likely criminal proceedings against you. As a property owner in the city, I don't want to see the financial consequences of your failings on my tax bill as they have for past lawsuits. It is your duty as elected officials to act in the best interest of the citizens, not yourself. Therefore, you must allow the investigations to proceed without interference and allow the city manager and city clerk to remain in their positions. The citizens, as they seem to be the only people with any power in this town who are interested in doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Bill Meyer?
Hi, Bill Meyer from Troughbridge, longtime resident. And I've attended more meetings than anybody else in Hamtramck because I love Hamtramck and I love the people who live here. I totally support the police union statement that was made earlier. I'm here to support both our beloved chief and the best city manager that I think we've ever had. He's a unifier. He's concerned about every resident. I have many examples to prove that, but like one, for example, he wants to have his office in the front hallway of City Hall so that he can help people when they come to the door and meet people. He doesn't want to be by himself up on the third floor in an expensive office. He's attended every city event. He replies immediately to every cause we have. I totally support Rex and his work. I ask you that you look for all the facts, find the whole truth before you make any decision. We need here from all relevant parties, whether it be from Max or from the chief of police. Our city does not need any more lawsuits, as you well know. But Max did make some critical mistakes. He did not consult the council and mayor before he made this decision. That was a very big mistake. And I think an investigation could have taken place without having to suspend the chief of police. Not sure about that, but our chief was highly vetted when he applied for this position. He's made a major mark in the city. His accusations against him are not really proven yet. Whistleblowers, the secret whistleblower and sentences in prison can make a lot of money from these sort of projects. And this happened before in the school system. You might want to look into things that happened with superintendent there. And there's many examples of this sort of stuff going on in the city, corruption. Not among the new people, but among the old. We need to ask, we need to ask why certain people are being targeted and attacked and other people are not. And I recommend that Max end the suspension, if possible, of our chief and let the investigation go forward, like others have said. Keep Max on his job for sure. The problem is not Max Garberino or Jamil Al Tahirri. Some people are intentionally creating chaos in the city by making baseless accusations. Let's get back to working together and let the truth and justice prevail and keep everybody on their job. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Elizabeth Finesier? Hamtramck resident, three minutes?
Members of the council, Mr. Mayor, and ladies and gentlemen, my name is Elizabeth Finesier and I'm the owner of Ferryfield LLC and Purple Pattern LLC who operate in Hamtramck. My clientele comes to visit my business in Hamtramck not only from all over Metro Detroit, but all over the country. Previous to opening my business in the city, I worked as a paralegal at a high-powered art and intellectual property right law firm in New York City. I left that job to return home to Michigan to invest my time, my money, and my talents in my home state. I am here today to remind you of the importance of law. The concept of democracy is considered to have been developed around the sixth or fifth century BCE. This is long before any of our times, though I thought it'd be useful to quote Aristotle. "Justice alone of the virtues is thought to be another's good because it is related to our neighbor; for it does what is advantageous to another. Now the worst man, who is exercising his wickedness, both towards himself and towards his friends, and the best man is not that who exercises his virtue towards himself, but he who exercises it towards another; for this is a difficult task. Justice in this sense is not part of virtue, but virtue entire; nor is the contrary in justice, a part of vice, but vice entire." What the difference is between virtue and justice in this sense is plain from what we have said. They are the same, but their essence is not the same. What, as a relation to one's neighbor, is just is as a certain kind of state without qualification, virtue. I encourage you to understand that the rule of law in this country exists to create justice for all. That is what would be sought by the people of Hamtramck so that neighbors and businesses can operate and flourish under fair law.
Thank you. Jeremy D., Hamtramck? Jeremy D.?
Jeremy D.? A Jeremy D.?
Yep.
Hi, longtime resident. And I'm just here to say that, you know, there's some serious allegations made against the chief of police. And it seems to me that the appropriate response to allegations like that leave of absence. The chief himself posted on Facebook today that we should let the investigations go forward, get to the bottom of them, and I agree with him. Let the man clear his name if there are baseless allegations. If there's something there, then we find that out too. I think placing someone with allegations that's serious levied against them on administrative leave seems appropriate. What I don't find appropriate is calling an emergency meeting to oust the people who put the man on leave. That seems like an appropriate response when there are allegations like this. Put him on leave, do an investigation, find out. If you're kicking people out or attempting to for whistleblowing, that doesn't, it's got a bad look to it, I think. I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Gilchrist? Melissa Gilchrist?
Melissa?
Gilchrist?
Hi, my name is Melissa Gilchrist. I am a resident of Hamtramck. I have lived here, owned property here, voted, paid property income taxes here for 26 years. And this is unprecedented in my experience. I did not even know this meeting was happening until I happened to be at City Hall today for another matter. And basically, all I want to say is that I hope the city council will follow the path of prudence and allow time for all investigations to play out before they make any final decisions. And the idea that we might be firing someone without that precedent happening is, is shocking and horrifying to me. And that's basically all that I have to say.
Thank you, Melissa. Ben Bowazir?
Ben Bowazir.
Ben Bowazir?
Bowazir.
Bowazir. Ben Bowazir?
Good enough.
Eliot? Eliot?
Okay. Milo Madol?
Milo Madol?
Hamtramck.
Mr. Mayor, Council. I guess I first just want to say I really, really, really don't want to be here. This is the last way that I want to be spending my Friday night, and I hope that we all feel that way. I think the problem with what's going on right now is this has become a personal matter, and it's not. I know some of you, you guys personally, I have good relationships with some of you guys personally. I know Max personally. I like the chief. I know the chief. I think a lot of what he's done has been really, really good for this city and for this community. But that's not what we're talking about. This isn't personal. This is a situation where serious misconduct has been alleged. Man has not passed judgment on the accused. He's referred, he's done his job, and he's referred this to the appropriate parties for further investigation. Firing for some, someone for doing their job is not appropriate. It's incredibly inappropriate, and it's probably illegal. It damages our community. It's the wrong thing to do. Let this play out. That's, that's the right thing to do, and Max did the right thing by referring this matter further. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Naim Chowdhury?
Naim Chowdhury. Naim, Naim Chowdhury.
Is it what I sound like when I call out names?
Not that bad. It's hard to hear.
Good afternoon, folks. Salaam alaikum. Peace be upon you all. Thank you so much for all being here today. This is outrageous. This is crazy what you guys are doing. You guys were elected to support the community, to bring the benefit to the community. You've been bringing one chaos to another. Mr. Garberino has been with the city for a long time. He has served this community for a long time, as you all know, as well as Mr. Chief Altari. He's a great guy. He's a great man. That man has been serving the community since he arrived here. So what are you guys doing? Bringing more chaos, more troubles, more disgracing the city, bringing the whole media here? That's not what you're supposed to do. You're supposed to work together, bringing jobs or making constructive decisions, making productive for the city. That would be, that would help us. This is why we elected you guys to do this, serve the community, not to backstab each other and find something to make, you know, chaos or noise. This is what you're doing. You're making noise in your entire country to look like you're doing something. You are not doing something. When I was on the council, the four, last four years, 2022, 2024, we worked shoulder to shoulder with the mayor, Galib, and former mayor, and then Councilman Hassan, and many of you. We, we brought forward the city. We brought, surpassed the city. We balanced the budget, 2.3 million. That's because people elected us to serve the community, not just to make fun and fame and do things that is not necessary. So I urge you guys to make your better decisions, to put this city first, not yourself. Thank you so much. God bless you.
Thank you. Abdulaziz Gobah?
My name is Abdulaziz Gobah, longtime resident in Hamtramck. I just want to make this for, for the record that I'm not, I'm not here against anybody, but I'm here supporting my community, my city, my people. I would like to, with that said, I support fair and transparent investigation for all involved party. I trust the mayor and the city council, and I am sure that, that they will do the right thing today. We need to end this corruption in our city, and I believe that the police chief was doing a good job. We hope the city manager considered the complaint of the chief police and addressed them fairly. And I'd like to say that in Arabic. شكرًا رئيس البلدية والمجلس البلدي وأيد إجراء تحقيق عادل وشفاف لجميع الأطراف المعنية. أثق رئيس البلدية وأعضاء مجلس البلدي وأنا متأكد من أن حماس سيأخذان القرار الصعب اليوم. علينا القضاء على الفساد في المدينة. وأعتقد أن قائد الشرطة كان يؤدي عمله على أكمل وجه. نأمل أن ينظر مدير المدينة السيد Max في شكاوي قائد الشرطة. Why you are a rich heart, be inside. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mark Corey? Plymouth, Michigan?
I think.
Mark Corey.
Mark Corey?
Corey.
What?
Mark Corey.
Mark Corey. Yep, he's coming.
Salaam alaikum. Today is a very special day in the city's history. It's been across all the news, there's always investigations, counter-investigations. And let me tell you, this has been going on for 60 years in a Hamtramck, all these allegations , going back to Mayor Canar. Mayor Canar's nephew was actually a client of mine, okay? Back in the days we had prohibition, 1970s, Jimmy Hoffa's body was supposedly incinerated in the city at 300 Christopher. Okay, that was a rumor, it was never proved by FBI, but that's what they thought. Okay, so we're always in a crosshairs of all controversy. Latest controversy was our BDS resolution, and that caused a lot of problems, State Department, every, it caused a lot of issues, as everybody knows. But this is a new issue, okay? Let me tell you, ten years here, I know most of the people down here. In fact, I've either sued or deposed most people down here. I sued Max, what? I might deposed him. I deposed Mr. Hassan, okay? But that point is, this goes on and on and on for years. Doesn't it? What I've heard now is that Monroe County prosecutors accepted some case, that's a rumor, I don't know it, but some case to file charges or to investigate possible charges against people in city council. I don't know, but I do know a lot of people involved, okay? I know people at Attorney General's Office that were involved, people in the Wake County prosecutors officer involved in the last voter fraud investigation, why it was stopped, why the AG's office didn't involve, why the state police dropped their case back in 2017. I was part of that, okay? Not part of the criminal activity, but I was part of the investigation, okay, as attorney. So, everybody knows that. What I want to indicate, though, is be careful. Be very careful, because the problems that I see when I sue the city was too many people are talking, leaking information, that could violate privacy laws. That's, you got to be real, real careful, okay? And we got to make sure we do everything proper here. Be careful, and, and because I know Max, Max had a good attorney, Mike Pitts, last time, Michael Pitts, okay? They finally lost him, but I am a man of one person, and we have deposed Max, and we deposed a lot of people in the city. Be careful, follow your attorney's advice, get good legal counsel, don't find any other good reason, because you get sued, okay? We don't want to see a city sued. Last thing, cities need to lose money due to lawsuits, okay? So be very, very careful, because I, I've encountered a lot of people at Attorney General's Office. I met with Tom Letterman, who's now made for the Republican Attorney General, I went to his house and do it. I talked to Dan Nelson before she was elected. Dan Nelson's office cleaned up in Hamtramck, "Don't worry about me." She never did. So with that, I wish to say, Godspeed.
Thank you. Mo Mohammed?
Mo Mohammed.
Mo Mohammed?
Salaam alaikum. Good afternoon, everybody. Officer David took my car for nine days, 19 days. He got me to lose my job, he got me to stay at home, lost my aid. I went through hell through those 19 days. He took, he took it. He left this, this state, I think, and when he came back, I tried to contact him. He kept giving me days after days after days after days. He said that my car was stolen, and I showed him proof that I got it from the auction, and he wouldn't believe it until we had to reach, reach out to the chief police, and he put in a word for us, and after that, he barely gave me my car back. And since then, he's been targeting me and my friends, and every time, like when I drive through the city, I don't feel safe, because knowing he's a police officer in Hamtramck, I feel like I'm going to get pulled over every, every time I drive around Hamtramck, so I barely stay in the city. I don't, I don't feel comfortable in the city because of him. I don't. That's it.
Thank you. Khalid Al-Masmeri?
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon. City council, everyone here, good, good afternoon. I am a longtime resident of the city of Hamtramck for almost 30 years, 35 years. I never seen it this bad. It's just very depressing to hear this negative news every other day from the city of Hamtramck. And I just hope and wish that we do find a way for a path to get out of this lumbus that we are in. Now, you are elected to these positions to work for the city, to improve the city, not to blame each other and go against each other. That is not what you work for. And both gentlemen, I know Max, and I know the chief for a long time. And they both are doing an exceptional job, I can say. Having said that, no one is above the law. Investigations ongoing. I really think we should wait for the investigations to be completed so we can make an informed decision. The city suffered a lot from lawsuits. What do you need another one, not from the chief or from Max? So I'm here to ask you to wait for the investigations to be completed and make an informed decision. And hoping and praying that's, that will be the end of this drama in the city. It's always good to hear good news. We had good news for a couple, for the couple of years passed, but now all we hear is negative. And, and believe me, when I talk to my friends and colleagues from outside the city, they, 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 they said, "We live in a third world country. We're not American anymore." We need to shake this. Thank you very much. Salaam alaikum.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, for some reason, our internet, like you're, I don't know if you're still having trouble with your computer?
It's froze for everybody.
Yeah, so do you mind if I just recycle? Thanks. Okay, thanks. I'm connected to, I'm hardwired in.
I think it's frozen everywhere. They're trying it out there.
Is this in my face, Greg? Okay.
Looks like it, internet's back up.
Let me see. What's that noise? Oh, my alarm clock. Is it?
We're like, what's that noise? And it's a beep right in front of us.
Here's a cop that should have triggered something on you. Is that a bomb?
Thank you.
Okay, we're, we're working again. Phew, oh my God. Would have been off with my head. Okay, Khalid spoke. Saydul Islam?
Saydul Islam?
Hello, yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I wanted to say a couple of things about the situation, the whole thing going on. We're just having a meeting one after another, emergency meeting coming up, and that's kind of out of normal, you know, schedule. And I want to see if you could, you know, take your time and get this thing processed. And I think it's time for you to speak up, you know, and get this thing a little moving. Because I've been hearing a lot of, you know, thinking about Max is going to get out of here and stuff like that, which, you know, I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure if you replace somebody, you'll get another guy, but it's going to take time, like I said before in my last speech last week. This is a good resource, good man, you know? He's been there for a while, and I'm here to support him. And, you know, I, I think right now is the time that we should just, you should just not take anybody's side, which is, I know that you're taking, I know you're going to be leaving soon, and you want to be silent and try to not create no enemy. But I think right now is the time for you to stand up and say enough is enough, then, you know, pull this to the point. What, about three weeks now? Yeah, about three months, I've been hearing every meeting, "Oh, we're going to have a meeting about Max." Why is it every week have to be like this? This guy going through, I don't know, probably he's going through depression and stuff like that, you know, but this, this, this is outrageous, man. You know, if, if he could stand up and, you know, stop being silenced and speak up, I think that would be, I think right now is the time. You know, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to disrespect you or anything, but you're a really nice guy, you know, and everybody's here nice. I am no personal issue with nobody, but I think there's some time, there's a line that we need to step down and say, you know, throw the towel. And I think right now is the towel time, you know? Please, I highly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to give you a heads up, I will speak up in a little bit, and you will hear other side of the story, because I was involved with all of this committee. So I, I advise everyone to listen, because that would be the most important part to hear. Thank you.
Yes, no, another thing, just like, if there is a day that you guys want to get rid of him, let's make it, let's make it.
No, 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 this, this meeting is not about that. This meeting is to make this investigation process fair and transparent and to bring justice.
And I think that's, everybody deserves that as a citizen of Hamtramck, you know? And if there is a day, you know, let's set up, one day, not every week, if we're trying to get this guy out or we're trying to get that person out, you know? And I highly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Abdul Muttaleb?
Last name?
Muttaleb. Abdul Muttaleb.
Abdul Muttaleb?
I'm sorry?
Probably 20.
Uh, not that many, no, they're, they're card stock, maybe like 10, 10 or 12, yeah.
Afternoon, Mayor, Council. I'm just curious to say a few things about Max. He's been with us for almost, what, 10 years now?
Last thing, cities need to lose money due to lawsuits, okay? So be very, very careful. Because I've encountered a lot of people at Attorney General's office. I met with Tom Letterman, who is now mayor for the Republican Attorney General. I went to his house and did it. I talked to Dan Nelson before she was elected. Dan Nelson's office cleanup and traffic, "Don't worry about me." She never did. So with that, I wish to say, Godspeed.
Thank you. Mo Mohammed.
Mo Mohammed.
Mo Mohammed!
Salaam alaikum. Officer David took my car for nine days, nineteen days. He got me to lose my job. He got me to stay at home, lost my aid. I went through hell through those nineteen days. He took it. He left this state, I think. And when he came back, I tried to contact him. He kept giving me days after days after days after days. He said that my car was stolen. And I showed him proof that I got it from the auction. And he wouldn't believe it until we had to reach out to the chief police. And he put in a word for us. And after that, he barely gave me my car back. And since then, he's been targeting me and my friends. And every time, like when I drive through the city, I don't feel safe. Because no one, he's a police officer in Hamtramck. I feel like I'm gonna get pulled over every time I drive around Hamtramck. So I barely stay in the city. I don't feel comfortable in the city because of him. I don't.
Thank you. Khalid Al Masmari? Khalid Al Masmari?
Yes, ma'am. City Council, everyone here, good evening, good afternoon. I am a longtime resident of the city of Hamtramck for almost thirty years, thirty-five years. I never seen it this bad. It's just very depressing to hear this negative news every other day from the city of Hamtramck. And I just hope and wish that we do find a way for a path to get out of this lumbus that we are in. Now, you are elected to these positions to work for the city, to improve the city. Not to blame each other and go against each other. That is not what we're capable of. I know both gentlemen, I know Max and I know the chief for a long time. And they both are doing an exceptional job, I can say. Having said that, no one is above the law. Investigations ongoing. I really think we should wait for the investigations to be completed. So we can make an informed decision. The city suffered a lot from lawsuits. What do you need another one, not from the chief or from Max? So I'm here to ask you to wait for the investigations to be completed and make an informed decision. And hoping and praying that will be the end of this drama in the city. It's always good to hear good news. We had good news for a couple of years past. But now, all we hear is negative. And believe me, when I talk to my friends and colleagues from outside the city, they said, "We live in a third world country. We're not American anymore." We need to shake this. Thank you very much. It's alright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, for some reason, our internet, like I don't know if you're still having trouble with your computer?
It's froze for everybody.
Yeah, so do you mind if I just recycle? Okay, thanks. I'm connected, I'm hardwired in.
I think it's frozen everywhere. They're trying it out there.
Is this in my face, Greg?
Looks like it, internet's back up.
Let me see. What's that noise? Oh, my alarm clock.
We're like, "What's that noise?" And it's beeping right in front of us.
Here's a cop that should have triggered something on you. Is that a bomb?
Thank you.
Okay, we're working again. Oh my god, would have been off with my head. Okay, Khalid spoke. Sayidul Islam?
Sayidul Islam?
Hello, yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I wanted to say a couple of things about the situation, the whole thing going on. We're just having a meeting one after another. An emergency meeting coming up. And that's kind of out of normal, you know, schedule. And I wanted to see if you could, you know, take your time and get this thing processed. And I think it's time for you to speak up, you know, and get this thing a little moving. Because I've been hearing a lot of, you know, thinking about Max is gonna get out of here and stuff like that. Which, you know, I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure if you replace somebody, you'll get another guy. But it's gonna take time, like I said before in my last speech, last week. This is a good resource, good man, you know. He's been there for a while, and I'm here to support him. And, you know, I think right now is the time that we should just, you should just not take anybody's side. Which is, I know that you're taking, I know you're gonna be leaving soon. And you wanna be silent and try to not create no enemy. But I think right now is the time for you to stand up and say enough is enough. Then, you know, pull this to the point. Because what, about three weeks now? Yeah, about three months, I've been hearing every meeting, "Oh, we're gonna have a meeting about Max." Why does it every week have to be like this? This guy going through, I don't know, probably he's going through depression and stuff like that, you know. But this is outrageous, man. If he could stand up and, you know, stop being silenced and speak up, I think that would be, I think right now is the time. You know, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to disrespect you or anything, but you're a really nice guy. You know, and everybody's here nice. I am no personal issue with nobody, but I think there's some time, there's a line that we need to step down and say, you know, throw the towel. And I think right now is the towel time, you know. Please, I highly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to give you a heads up, I will speak up in a little bit. You will hear other side of the story. Because I was involved with all of this committee. So I advise everyone to listen, because that would be the most important part to hear. Thank you.
Yes, no, another thing, just like, if there is a day that you guys wanna get rid of him, let's make it, let's make it.
This meeting is not about that. This meeting is to make this investigation process fair and transparent and to bring justice.
And I think that's, everybody deserves that as a citizen of Hamtramck, you know. And if there is a day, you know, let's set up one day, not every week, if we're trying to get this guy out or we're trying to get that person out, you know. And I highly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Abdul Muttaled?
Last name?
Muttaled. Abdul Muttaled.
Abdul Muttaled?
I'm sorry?
Probably twenty.
Uh, not that many, no, they're card stock. Maybe like ten, ten or twelve.
Afternoon, Mayor Council. I'm just curious to say a few things about Max. He's been with us for almost, what, ten years now? Well, probably longer than that, he was the police chief prior to that. This guy knows the city hidden out. He's been serving our community very well. I mean, the last few years, all the work that's been getting done. He's been involved in everybody's business that's been opening up. And always, he's always there for all the citizens of this community. All the allegations that's coming up on him. I know, like, okay, maybe he suspended the police chief. If that's protocol, if that's procedure, based on whatever evidence he's got, that's what he had to do. But to have a meeting all of a sudden just to suspend him or to get rid of him, I don't know if that's, basically, we're pointing fingers at each other. Trying to get this guy out and trying to get this guy back in. Let's just cut all this and just work together. I mean, City Council as well as the administration. We should work together to further this city. Not just, you know, pick and choose who we wanna favor and who we wanna get out of this thing. So I think we should all get together and just, you know, look for progress for the city. Not just one finger. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Gias Tlektor? Gias?
Gias Tlektor?
Gias.
I think the mic has, now, can you hear? Okay. Good evening, everyone. We have been here for almost past two hours. My name is Gias Taladra, I'm a businessman in Hamtramck. I was a former resident too here. What is happening here is dividing us over there. We want you to, like, you guys are the ruler of Hamtramck. You guys, we put you guys here, I mean, the residents of Hamtramck put you guys here so that there is no chaos. There is no division that should go around. And Mr. Mayor, Mayor Galib, he has been here, he's a very sweet guy that we know. He, you know, he have the judgment. Of course, he's a doctor, medical doctor. It takes a lot to be a doctor. So I'm sure he has this, how to clarify everything. And to verify everything that's happening here. We want to be here for the tribe. We don't want to be divided. And looking at your ethnic group, there's nothing wrong in it. But we don't wanna fall for it just for the ethnic group. We wanna fall for everybody. You wanna create a garden, there has to be all kinds of flowers in it, then only we call it a garden. If there's only one kind, that doesn't look beautiful. Secondly, the gentleman right here, we are hearing things about him. I don't know how much sure it is, like, if they're trying to get rid of him or not. This is an asset to our city. Where, in which city will you find a CM, which is a city manager, that will reply to your messages, messages early in the morning? Two AM, one o'clock, no matter what time it is? I don't know if he sleeps or not. You know, take some sleep, Max. He replies, he tried to take care, solve your problem. And we don't wanna get rid of such people from the city. If there's any shortcomings, we all have shortcomings. Nobody's perfect. If there is any, let's put it together on a table and take care of it and solve the problem. Don't give hard times to all the people that are here. We have almost like maybe ten full rooms of people that are waiting in the hallway to speak here. Most of them are in favor of Max. And I'm not talking about Chief Tahir here, because I don't know if there's, there is an allegation they're saying. But we all have allegations if we look about. But Tahir, so far I know him, he's a nice guy. He is not chief, but he is there to be chief, you know, he has that ability. At the same time, we want Max in our city of Hamtramck.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. That's good, thanks. Is it Kenneth Bark?
Yeah.
Come on through, sir. Three minutes.
How many?
You have three minutes.
Three minutes. Alright, thank you. Good afternoon, City Council members. Alright. I'm not sure what's going on, but I saw it on the news yesterday. But I'm here in support of the chief himself. I've known the chief since he first got here, since you first hired him. And he has always been a community chief. I've never known him to be in the station. He's always out in the community. When it came election time, never saw any of you guys in my neighborhood, Hamtramck. So I don't know who you are. But when he was supporting certain one of you guys on City Council, and he had the election up at the, when he had the election up at the high school, he made sure that his neighbors, which I, he stays directly across from me. I remember when he started working on that house, when he first got here. Now, you guys called him all the way from New York just to be the chief of police for a year? Something's wrong. This guy left his job, that was sound and permanent, to come here to the city of Hamtramck and be a police officer. As far as I know, the crime rate is down in Hamtramck. The patrols are up in Hamtramck. Because I remember time coming through Hamtramck, which I've been raised through all my life. You couldn't even find a police car at night in the city of Hamtramck. Detroit you could find, but not in Hamtramck. But he has increased that. Now we have more police officers patrolling the city of Hamtramck. That is Hamtramck. You used to have Wayne County Sheriff from twelve o'clock at night to seven o'clock in the morning, or whatever. But he is a good chief, and whatever you got against him, I think the terms are very, very, very false. Some of you guys need to sit down and look at yourselves. Because every politician is not right. Not even you. Not even you, Mr. Mayor. Because he campaigned for you. So I'm gonna end mine short, because I don't have, I don't need three minutes. But I am a total supporter of his. And he's been across the street from me ever since he arrived in the city of Hamtramck. He's a good police chief. And like I said, he never, I've never heard him being in his office. He's always patrolling the city day, afternoon, and night. So whatever his charge is, he's not making a public to the public. So it is what it is. Thank you. You guys have a good day.
Thank you. Al Madina Goze?
Al Madina Goze? Is Al Madina here?
No. Jual Mohammed?
He just went to the bathroom. He literally came in and told me.
Did you have to announce that to people? Okay, Rizal Chowdhury?
For our council, it's very unfortunate. We are going on media and national attention. One incident or another. I personally think it was not necessary to call an emergency meeting today. The city has a meeting scheduled on Tuesday. We could discuss all matters together there. We are human beings, we can make mistakes. And we make mistakes, somebody has to make a judgment, investment, I'm sorry, investigation. If that person gets innocent after the investigation, we'll celebrate it, we'll honor it. If after the investigation someone gets proven guilty, they have to be punished. It is that rule. So I would urge City Council to make very careful decision if you have to do today. Because the whole, not only Hamtramck, whole region is watching you. Your one wrong mistake could ruin your reputation. And the city could be in bad situation, get sued and others. So please consider, if you have, if you need to take time, take more time, discuss yourself, discuss with the parties, and take the wise decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Al Hassan Al Harbi?
Last name?
Al Hassan Al Sharbi.
Al Hassan Al Sharbi? No.
No? Kabir Ahmed.
Shabir Ahmed?
Kabir. Kabir.
Kabir. Those files.
Okay. M.D. Islam?
M.D. Islam?
How are you, everyone? Hang on, a long time after, I am in the City Council meeting, which is emergency meeting. That's why I'm here. You know, the city of Hamtramck and other cities, they are always facing some hard time, some problems. But they are solving their problem, you know, within their council and their administration. And I am requesting all of you, the City Council, mayor, city manager, and clerk, everybody, please work together and resolve this issue, which is better for us. And don't like, put some pressure on the citizens of the city of Hamtramck. Because if you are, I don't know, if you are make a wrong decision and city guard, a city will get any lawsuit, then we have to pay from our pocket. We have to pay from our pocket. This is the request to the City Council and the administration of the city of Hamtramck. The second thing is, your fire department, they are going to the businesses once a year to like, see how it's going on. And they are charging one hundred dollars. Okay, you could, you could charge one hundred dollars for the business, but remove, please remove one hundred dollars from the mosque or church, religious institution entity. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Nasr Kade?
Nasr Kade? He's coming.
Salaam alaikum. Good evening, everyone. I don't usually speak, but I guess today, I'd like to express our opinion about Chief Tahir. He's not here tonight, but he's a, he's a really good man, to my opinion. He's built bridges between the community and between the people. He's broadest to a level where nobody's broadest before. So, you know, I mean, we really appreciate him, and we hope that we can resolve this problem. Plus Max, he's been with us for decades, twenty-eight years and so. So, you know, we hope that we can fix this problem altogether. We don't want nobody to leave. We want everybody. We finally got to the spot in our community where things are going good. And now we're gonna bring him backwards. We don't want that. We wanna go forward with everybody, with Max and with the chief. Thank you, everybody. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ahmed Sharaf, Detroit?
Salaam alaikum. Herbously, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, and our Prime Minister. Nazar. I get so upset, frustrated. I'm gonna move it to Arabic. This is about America. Salaam alaikum, rahmatullahi wa barakatuh. Ahmed Sharaf al-Din. Na'jutu qoqay. Ina ta'hadth al-nafi. Sa'at ta'hadth an shati ni xamstahir sa'adat al-unda. Anta sadiq, ma'ak sadiqay. Kllaman khalfiya astiqah. Laqeen al-haq fowq al-kulm. Wa ana. Sama'tu kllal khamet. Kllum di ta'hadthu.
Can you tell them to calm down outside?
Sa'adat al-unda. Al-kul bi ta'hadthu ala masharum. Al-kul ta'hadthu ala masharum. Qadiyah xaridat. Wa yijib alaikam ta'tathqar. Ra'is al-amliki, Donald Trump. Wada fi ka thiqah. Ka qaid mukhtamayn. And diplomatic person. Eda xaridta liyom, ant. Wahib Mahmoud. Sa'adat al-atorney. Abu Moosa. Ana adgi kllu wa'ad bi ismoo li'anah mu yom al-dinas ta'tadhugun bi isma'akum. Bi deyanatikum. Ukllu wa'ad gharif ashdi bqalbu. Al-yom yom al-mashar, al-mashar, sa'adat al-unda. I wish you translate that. Al-yom yom al-madaras, yom al-turukat. Sana'tain, wal-madinat u'ani. Ala ayy qadiyat ta'tathqar. Men al-ladi bi khofna al-madinat. Ad-wajah qadiyah. Qadiyati ana. Ennu ibni ma'andu madras al-salaha. Qadiyati ana. Ashwara tathayt ta'sla. Qadiyati ana. The city of Hamtramck near Habsburg. Amen hu wa'ad di tkellem li ala. Sayid Max ala jami'at tahiri ala. Hanush yom al-asma. Al-yom yom al-qarar. Untum muthamlin hadda. Yom al-qarar. Thank you. Please translate.
No, you have one more minute. I wasn't cutting you off.
No, I'm just upset.
Okay, no problem. No problem. Thank you. Jual Mohammed?
He wants me to translate. So he's talking about that we should put emotions aside and take the wise decision regarding this. And he's complaining about, you know, the priorities, that there are some priorities for the residents, including schools, roads, you know, street, alleys. And he cares more about that, and he needs to see improvement. He doesn't want discussing personal stuff and wasting our time like that. And so he is asking us to be decisive about this and to take the right decision.
Thank you. Jual Mohammed?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jual Mohammed. I moved to this city back in 2001 from New York, and I love this city. So today, I'm here to support Mr. Max Cabrano. He has been doing really great job. I'm gonna go a little bit, a little while back. Back in 2008, after the recession, this city, we had trash everywhere. Max Cabrano, Bill, was there, Andrew, John Oly, and many others, Anamya, many others that I don't remember the name right now. They, we had a team, we cleaned up the city every weekend. So we don't have many good ones left. Try to keep the good ones, okay? And without the Max Cabrano, the city clerk, you guys are not capable to do a lot of things. So keep it cool and keep the good ones. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Steven Thiel?
Thiel?
Steven Thiel, T-H, from Rose Point Farms?
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Steven Thiel from Rose Point Farms. I heard about today's proceedings on the news, and I do not fully understand the circumstances that has brought such a loud, large crowd here today. But I would like to take the opportunity to place my concerns about the Hamtramck Police Department on the record. A few years ago, I was arrested for a crime I did not commit and spent two days in the lockup before being released. While in lockup, I received two bologna sandwiches each day totaling approximately four hundred calories. The Michigan Department of Corrections requires inmates receive an average of twenty-six hundred calories per day. Some inmates downstairs can spend up to four days in lockup, depending on which day they're arrested. Especially if it's a holiday like a more weekend coming up. This is tantamount to cruel and unusual punishment, a violation of the Eighth Amendment to the United States Constitution. I immediately recognized this is wrong and illegal, and that a crime was and still is being committed by the Hamtramck Police Department. My intention was to petition the government to resolve this issue. I filed a Freedom of Information Act request, only to be told that no records exist regarding the origin of the bologna sandwiches. regarding the origin of the bologna sandwiches, the purchase, or how they were acquired by the city of Hamtramck. I think this is concerning, especially that my attempt to resolve it only resulted in a dead end. So however this investigation plays out, I would ask that the counsel, the police department, and anyone else involved try to address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Latrello Seifers? Latrello Seifers?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hello, Mr. Seifers.
Hey, how are you, clerk?
Thank you, I'm well, thank you so much.
Hey, what's going on, city council? We know there must be something going on. We got a million people, a lot of, out of this city, all lined up and a million television trucks out there, every single police in the city up here. The city could be getting robbed right now. But listen, I saw a picture out there and I'm appalled of that picture. How could y'all put a picture in this building of Trump? So what I'm gonna do is, I'm offering to the people out there in TV world, I'm offering $500. If they come up here and take that picture down, I am giving you $500. Do you want more? I'll give you more, but that picture needs to come down. Shame on you guys for putting that picture up there. $500 right now to a person that come in here and take that picture off the wall and give it to me. I'm standing out right in front of City Hall. Mostly everybody in Hamtramck know where to find me. I am very appalled of you guys to have that picture up there. $500 right now to a person that come get that picture off that damn wall. Shame on you. Shame. That picture doesn't represent Ha- Hamtramck. That picture represents a part. We want someone hanging on that wall. You got some other Republicans up there, but they didn't do the things that he has done. Shame on you. You guys just wanted to take a picture with somebody that was popular and put it up on that wall with the rest of them presidents. $500 right now to a person that come get that picture off that wall. $500. And everybody in Hamtramck know me. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Seifers. Take care. Let's just finish the recording. Rabia M? Rabia?
Hi, everybody. My name is Rabia and I'm a resident of Hamtramck. Come here to support the police chief, Jamil Al-Tahari. This is actually sad that I can say Hamtramck City what it got to. And...
It's okay, you can just hold it up.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Sorry about that. It's sad to see us on a news like this. I think they should have been taken care of between mayor and city manager before the media and everybody else. I had encountered a couple of times with Max when I did call him and it wasn't a good experience at all. So I think Max was achieved before and he was a corrupt chief, so he needed to be taken down immediately. And he should have been a manager at all. So before the meeting, I think you guys should have sit down and discuss it with mayor of the city before you guys brought everybody in. And I hope everybody sits down and make a decision because this is ridiculous, honestly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, thank you. Thank you for the time.
Uh, I believe, is there anyone else who? That's it? Okay, that is all for, I know. That is all for public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Did you get out those emails?
Oh, yes, thank you for the reminder. It's just the one. It's from, okay, so I did get an email. The reason I skipped over it because it didn't say that it was a public comment. It just said it was to the mayor and city manager. But it says, this is from Brooklyn Auto Mall to the mayor and city manager. I want to make a formal complaint against a Wayne County detective named David. He helped me pick up a car back that I legally bought from owner. She reported it stolen and it was why her boyfriend who made payments. It was with her boyfriend who made payments. I also cleared issue with detectives with her in 67th precinct and everything is legally done. David and previous owner have been in contact for some time based on what my friends and she had been reporting, making the conspiring against something or whatever, which I don't know why. I have all the legal documents and the car in question is in my legal possession. Please clarify why David's name keeps coming up and I'm confused. My attorney can follow up if you like. And they did attach a sale transaction, which to me, I don't understand what it means, but it is attached. But that's the, that's the email.
Thank you.
No problem.
Well, I think with that, we come to the end of the public comment and we'll start discussing the only issue in the new business, which is discussing the volatility within the city hall administration. Can I get a motion to start the discussion? I mean, it's not like, I don't think we need to vote, but just...
Yeah, but we need a motion.
We need a motion.
I want you to start the discussion.
A second. So, so thank you, everyone, for coming. I appreciate your time. We actually, we are not here to punish anyone today. We just want to make sure that the investigation is fair and transparent. You have seen allegations sent from an anonymous person, right? Nobody knows who wrote those. Including recordings of the chief and it. I'm saying this because the chief is not here to defend himself. But I know he, he sent me a lot of stuff, including what you just heard now. This is justification of one of the allegations of the stolen car. So when that person come, the owner of the car, and talk about this and makes a false accusation, then things will look different. I was mentioned in one of those allegations regarding the election. 100% false accusation. And for that reason, I wanna ask the FBI to include me in that investigation. His wife sent an email to deny that he is abusing her. That was another one of the accusations. So when you hear from the other side, you may change your mind. Now, Hamtramck would never be again a safe heaven for criminals and leftovers of other cities to come here and cause incivility and toxic work environment here. And their eyes and their focuses are on our resources. The interest of the people of Hamtramck is their last priority. And that's what some officers came and from day one, and that tells you why there's recording of the police from 2024 and stuff. That tells you what was the goal from the beginning of this. And one of the wives of this officer sued Hamtramck Public Schools for a million dollars. So what's happening now is we are treating the police chief as a criminal until proven otherwise. Why, in fact, it should be innocent until proven otherwise. Now, leaking this information allegation to the media and weaponizing the media against our community is another issue. I was involved in this and I spent so many meetings with the police chief and with Max trying to settle this down so it doesn't leak out and it doesn't get worse. I didn't know this allegation wasn't there. So I spent, at the last meeting, we were so good with the attorney and we agreed that we will go out for dinner. Max said, okay, you have a full autonomy of the police department. I'm not gonna get involved. Do whatever you want with Dave. And we promised each other that we will go for dinner together because everything is settled down. The next day, I heard from the news that the police chief was suspended. Why? Because anonymous person sent some allegations to Max. And I was involved in this thing from the beginning, at least as a respect, I should be informed what was happening. I heard from the news, he's suspended. What's happening? I thought we settled everything down. Oh, no, anonymous person sent some allegations and I had to act. Well, I'm telling you here, these allegations from the police chief complains from May 12, and I was included in the emails against this officer and Max Y C C, serious allegations. And Max is included. Max is part of this. And that's why I'm saying that the investigation has to be fair and transparent. I would ask Max at the end, I don't want him to interrupt you, man, right now, why didn't you act based on this allegation? He said, I sent you multiple times about insubordination of this guy. He's not listening to me. He's doing investigation against elected officials without my knowledge, without my, without my order, without my... He said, I don't know who's telling him to do that. These are serious allegations. Max didn't take any actions, May 12, May 14, May 15, May 19. He sent me these emails after he tried so. Because in the interview, we asked him a question. If there, if you are told to do something against the law, what would you do? By your boss, who's Max. He said, I will talk to him first, try to resolve the issue. What if he doesn't listen to you? And he insists that you do stuff against the law. He said, in that case, I have to reach out to a higher authority to let them know. And that's what's happening here. This makes Max part of the investigation. And that's why I'm just asking for fair and transparent investigation. Why didn't you act in May 12 when he complained about this officer? And you act within minutes when you received the allegations from an anonymous person? That raises a question. I'm not asking that you should get in trouble. We are not here to punish you, but you're gonna be part of the investigation because you are, you are not impartial in this. You are of one party, one side. And so you should be investigated and whatever applies to the police chief should apply to you and to the other officer. I am asking myself to get involved in the FBI investigation. Why? Because my name was mentioned in the allegations regarding the vote, whatever fundraising and stuff, which is totally 100% false. And that's why I want to testify. And that's why I didn't believe most of these allegations. Because once you read some of them and you know it's false, then you know that something is going on. So to ensure neutrality, impartiality of this investigation, a private investigation company is rejected 100%. The guy is own, the guy owning private investigation company and that's his business. That's what he does for life. And there's a possible conflict of interest because Max, when he was fired in 2015, worked for this guy. And then he asked the police chief for a favor to bring him back. So one of these allegations is frequent meeting between him and Max and God knows what, why is he taking his order from Max and not from the police chief? A lot of stuff that needs to be investigated, include in the investigation. So FBI is fine. That would be transparent and fair. A private company is not accepted, Max. I ensured before I came that you are not gonna get in trouble today. I made sure that you will get just treatment and everybody else. I'm volunteering myself to be part of the investigation because I have a lot to say. We had meetings. I thought we solved the issue. I got you together with the police chief. I got Khalil Rafai, Kalim Rafai with the police chief and we thought we solved everything. And then things I heard from the news, what's going on. Weaponizing the judiciary system and the media against our community is unacceptable. Hiring people of criminal backgrounds and leftovers of other cities for personal gains, that's what they come for. The interest of the community is their last priority. It's not acceptable anymore. And if it doesn't get fixed now, it will never get fixed. And that's why I'm gonna ensure that this investigation would be fair and transparent. You don't treat a person as a criminal based on allegations from anonymous person. If that person, you said that he handed to you the same allegation, then he's responsible for the recording, which is illegal. That happened 2024, an argument between the police chief and his wife. She's denying everything here. So you can't just believe whatever you hear. Things about our personal life, everybody has issues with his family and stuff. Shouldn't be, well, there was a department head who got involved in an accident and he was intoxicated with alcohol. Did you hear about that in the news? No, why? Because he doesn't belong to, I'm gonna say it clearly. He's somebody that he likes. So he didn't want to leak those information to the media. If he was, if he belongs to a different community, I'm sure it would be in the media and they would be all around here. But did you hear about it? No. Because he's, you know, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna mention no name. But this is the truth. We, this is gonna be included in every investigation. I made sure and I talked to the people here that you are not gonna get fired. We just want to ensure transparent investigation, fair investigation, justice should prevail. Did you hear the story of the police chief? No, because he's not getting a chance to speak and defend himself. You only hear everything on the media from one side. You're not hearing from the other side. And that's why I'm speaking here and I'm pissed off because everybody's talking about hearing some anonymous allegations from an anonymous person and everybody's believing that. If he's guilty after the investigation, fine. He should be held accountable and should be, I'm not gonna defend him if he's guilty. But there are other side of the story, other people that needs to be investigated. This guy who caused incivile work environment is not being investigated. Yes, he's in a leave, paid leave, absence, whatever it's called, but he's not being investigated for these allegations that happened two and three weeks ago. He should be investigated. FBI is gonna take care of this. I will be part of this investigation because my name is mentioned in the allegations and I have a lot to say. Max will be part of that. So that should be fair, I think. If the police chief, whatever applies to him is gonna apply to Max, I think. That should be fair. If the police chief should be away from the city hall, that should happen to Max and Dave as well. If Max wants, you know, to stay here, then the police chief should come back maybe and in the days that FBI comes, they both leave the city hall and then that would be fair. So they don't impact the investigation. That's what I need to say and I think that should be fair. I'm not gonna take, I advise, because I can't control the city council, I advise against firing Max. But I advise that the investigation should be transparent and fair. I'm leaving the city. I could say I don't care what's gonna happen. But I care about the city resources. Because everybody, when they talk, they threaten us with a lawsuit. A lawsuit, like there was no lawsuits in the past. We had one that lasted 60 years. We had so many lawsuits for stupid things in the past. You didn't hear in the news about them because nobody used to leak them in the news. But now there's intention, a bad intention, to make our community looks bad. And that's why every little thing leaks out in the media. You know, investigation against elected official, that's fine, but it shouldn't be by a private investigation. It should be by the government, by Attorney General, by whoever. Our city should not, our department, especially without the knowledge of the police chief. How are you working without your boss, without telling your boss? You're gonna have to investigate people because somebody else told you who overstepped his power. I'm not allowed to talk to the police chief and tell him what to do. I have to go through Max. Same thing for those people. He is in full autonomy of the police department. And if there's insubordination like this, people refuse to listen to him, that's an issue. It should have been fixed when he complained about it three weeks ago. In fact, more because it mentioned here, I have talked to you multiple times. So that's why the FBI showed up today. That's good. We want the FBI to get involved because it would be fair and transparent. And if the police chief is guilty, he should be held accountable. I don't care, I'm not gonna defend him. But if somebody else also is guilty, same thing. Do you think this is fair? I'm not saying, you know, punish someone for doing something or retaliate, no. I'm just saying, everybody, we should take every allegation into consideration and it should be investigated and everyone should be involved in this. And whatever, you know, the result is, the person who's at fault should be held accountable. But your city, as long as I'm here, will not accept it, accepting any more criminals with criminal backgrounds or leftovers from other cities to come and just try to get our resources. Their eyes is only on lawsuits. They don't care about you. And everything they talk, they threaten us with lawsuits. That's not acceptable. This is not gonna happen. And there's so much stuff that I wanna say, not against anybody, but so we can get things fixed. And if it doesn't get fixed now, it will never get fixed again. I'm telling you. And if this police chief, you know, mistreated, I don't think you will get one from your community for the next two decades. I'm sure about that. But if he's guilty, I'm not gonna defend him. I'm just telling you. So, that's what I have to say. If anybody else want to say something, that's fine. But we need to get to the closed session. Why, Councilman Mohammed Muhammad is still here because he has to leave.
Mr. Mayor, if I may respond to that?
You can.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Few points here. First of all, the city did not leak out any of these allegations. The police chief was put on leave, paid leave at that because there's suspected criminal activity that was alleged. The chief will have his opportunity, full opportunity, to actually speak to the investigators and give his side of the story. That has never been a question. I feel comfortable mentioning the emails that you brought up now only because I consider it a resolved matter, actually. I did receive several emails from the police chief, and I found them to be uncredible and untruthful.
Why didn't you order investigation? You were defensive about the police chief.
May I finish, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Because you yourself wanted to make the peace, so I let it go. I did, 100%. The chief sent a whole series of emails that were inappropriate, unprofessional, and making wild claims that I knew personally...
It makes so much sense.
Mayor, that I knew personally were unfounded and untrue. But I let it go. So, that, those, and that's the only reason I'm speaking about it because we're not looking at that right now. We can certainly bring it into this if you want, but that was a closed matter.
It was unresolved. I didn't talk about it in the meeting. We talked about you, your issue with the police chief, not this guy.
I'm not trying to get back and forth with the mayor, but I know as a fact 100% that I brought up the issue of the police chief sending random emails.
It's not random. I mean, to me, it's serious allegations.
And we 100% can include those in there? I have nothing to hide with that.
Why didn't you include it when it happened? Why did you act within minutes when the other guys sent you allegations?
Mayor, because I just stated that I considered that a resolved matter because I found them to be uncredible when I got them. They were not valid on their face. They were literally made up. With that said...
That's the investigation would decide, not you. Because he's saying, saying stuff about the allegations that they are made up stories, but we insisting to investigate that. So, you can't just, you know, neglect them and say, no, they are, they make so much sense. You ordered investigations without his knowledge, using someone in the police department, which is overstepping your power, violating the rules.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, that is not true. It may be in there, but it's not true. And if you'd like, I can discipline the police chief before sending that allegations. But I considered, I considered it a closed matter.
It doesn't matter. You should have investigated this. You can't judge yourself.
Mayor, I knew it to myself to be not factual. I knew it as not being factual. And I could easily prove it to be unfactual. But we made the peace in the PD with you, so I let that go.
And then the next day, I heard from the news, you suspended him. You didn't let me know. I see as a respect, you spent so much time for you, with you both.
Mayor, there are significant, potentially criminal allegations. Everything in those emails is not criminal. That's just civil disturbance.
No, it's violation of the rules too. But anyway, anyways, I think you mentioned, you mentioned that it should be included in the...
And I'm fine with that.
Because you are one side of this matter, there are allegations against you. So, you will be also part of the investigation.
May I finish, Mayor?
And no private company will take care of this investigation. It will be the government, it will be the FBI. That's what I want, and I think that's fair. If you are innocent or Officer Dave innocent, then you're fine. You'll come victorious. We are not taking any action against you at this point. Same thing with the police chief. If he's innocent, that's fine. We're gonna celebrate all of us. If he's guilty, he's gonna be held accountable. I think that's the only fair way to move on with this from now. We're not punishing anyone. I advise against punishing anybody. But I think that investigation has to be fair and transparent, and all parties should be involved. And we should not treat somebody as criminal based on allegations. It should be the opposite. Innocent and proven otherwise. That's not what we are doing. We are causing defamation of character of this guy. There are some figures mentioned in the allegations, names of some ladies, that can cause serious life risk to them and their families. Based on allegations. It could be professional relationship. You never know. You don't just throw a name of a person and say, oh, he is in a, he is having affairs with some respected, highly respected, highly educated person that is mentioned in there and causing risk for her and her family. And then you leak it to the news and to the public before you make sure, is it true or not? These are serious stuff that will be addressed. Like I said, I'm volunteering to be part of this investigation because my name was mentioned in the allegation. So, I would have to ask the FBI to ask me and hear what I have to say. And I think that's the only, the only entity that we'll accept to get involved, or the state police. Private companies, no. There's conflict of interest. We can, we can do that because, you know, the other side is saying, you worked in 2015 with this guy. There's, you know, the nature of your relationship with them will be investigated, I think. So, it, we are not gonna accept private company to investigate this. Especially after the, you know, the previous experience with that unprofessional company that came and gave us one-minute report, didn't even know how to state his name. So, that's not gonna happen again. That's, I think everybody is, I don't think a wise person should disagree with what I'm saying. Everybody should be investigated and if proven innocent, that's it.
Mr. Mayor, may I finish?
Go ahead.
I didn't want to cut you off, but I was, I wasn't done. So, there are two issues at hand here. There's criminal allegations that are alleged, which, as you stated, the federal agencies are involved in investigating. And then there's civil internal departmental allegations that come along with that. These are two separate distinct things. The Federal Bureau of Investigations is not going to come in here and sort through this mess. They are simply going to look at what the federal crimes are here, and then maybe in a year from now, they'll come back and say, oh, yes, we have this. That's how that works. They will not come in here and essentially sort out all the state charges and drama. The reason that I've secured an outside agency, and that agency is actually AG Advisors Global, which is a very reputable company. It's a former FBI agent, retired FBI agent that runs this company, and all his employees are former law enforcement. They've done large tasks such as the Flint water crisis and other things where they investigated for the AG's office. They're respected, they have references. I have no personal ties to them whatsoever. I can't speak...
I mean, you can say that, but nobody is gonna believe it. Basically, it's not gonna be the company of your choice. We have to get involved. If it's a private company, we have to get involved and make it so.
And Mayor, I offered for you to meet with them today?
No, I don't wanna meet with them. It came through you and you are part of the investigation. You are one side. They accuse you of being an opponent. And there's, there's a proverb in Arabic that said, if you are the opponent, how could you be the judge? You know, if you are the opponent, you can't be the judge. And you are making decisions, but you are part of this.
Mayor, very often, when people are in the hot seat, they cast dispersions to get themselves out of it. And I'm not saying that the chief is guilty or gonna be responsible for any of this. But I'm telling you that as his boss and the city manager, there is a right way to handle this and a wrong way to handle this. So, I just literally explained to you those emails that you sent that were invalid on their face. But I opted not to punish, but I opted not to punish the chief of police for those. And I found those untruthful. I did, and I can absolutely prove that. But I did it, I chose not to.
In the meeting, he told you in front of the attorney, what if the fire chief comes and he has one of his firefighters with you all the time in your office, wouldn't you get mad? You didn't deny that, that you meet with the guy regularly without the knowledge of the police chief?
Mayor, I specifically... I specifically said that I walk through city hall all the time and check on the employees throughout and talk to people. I have known this city for over 20 years. I know everybody here. It's good management to walk through city hall, take a turn through the police department and be sociable with our employees. 100%.
What about that investigation?
What do you mean about that investigation?
Against the elected officials without his knowledge.
It was, Mayor, 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 I will tell you unequivocally as a fact, and I have absolute witnesses to that, the chief was aware of that.
He mentioned this and made talk.
I know what he mentioned, and it's a blatant lie, and I can prove that.
Okay, that, who will decide that?
Mayor, Mayor, sometimes, sometimes bosses have to intervene with their subordinates, and subordinates lash out. That's just like if you fire an employee, they automatically sue you or sue the company or the city you work for. That's how it works.
Okay, instead of going back and forth with this argument, all we are asking for is that all these allegations from this guy need to be included in the investigation.
100%, Mayor, it's perfectly fine.
Everything you are doing is from one side. Everything of the media is from one side. We are not hearing this person. Maybe if he's here, he would have a lot to say.
Mayor, chief will have an opportunity to say everything he wants.
Okay, we agree on that. That's it. The company, if we go with a private company, we will make a...
I have two more points. Any allegations against the officer will also be investigated fully. Anything the chief has to say, 100% will be investigated. Full transparency with this, Mayor. You are welcome to be part of every part of it. But there has to be two distinct things. There has to be a criminal thing, which the FBI isn't gonna tell us anything about. And then there has to be an internal thing from an outside respected agency, which we've already secured. I invite you...
This is the only thing we disagree with. A third party should be our choice, all of us, not yours.
What if I came up with a list of 10? A breakdown to everybody?
We'll do our research. We'll do our research with you and agree on one.
Mr. Chief?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, you're done?
Yeah, go ahead.
May I speak? Good evening. We came here today to solve the problem, not make the problem.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor, but can I announce that there is no quorum at this moment?
We can discuss, we cannot take the decision.
I know, so just to, just to announce there is no quorum, so no motion.
So, I can discuss, but I cannot take any decision.
Thank you.
So, we came here to solve the problem. Relation between the city manager and elected official and the department head is very important to move forward the Hamtramck City. And yes, we do have some disagree, agree, disagree. I still, I've been 16 years council member here. And some of the residents I saw today came here reading all those stuff against the council members, that think they are the one, knows everything in the world, and who's sitting here, they are nobody. But they have to understand that somebody sitting here, some of them have more knowledge, more degree, more work experience. You can laugh all day long, I never saw you Hamtramck. And I don't know what you, you have to eat all day long, what you're reading. Somebody give you written and reading, not us. We can speak everything clearly, okay? So, again, no division. So, we'll go into the closed session. We'll come out from the closed session with the good decision. It not gonna harm Hamtramck City, not gonna harm anybody. And we'll find out the way. Remember that. Maybe you don't know even definition of the democracy. Government of the people, by the people, for the people. Okay? So, a lot of you don't know, just one left here. So, we are for the people. We will, we will make the decision, make sure there is not lawsuit against the city. And I saw the two, three lawsuit. City lost. We lose. We have to pay, make the settlement, okay? So, we, we know what we're gonna do tonight. Make sure all the taxpayer money is not going the wrong way. And again, just one left, you know, everybody. We are gonna go closed session, we'll come back, and we will have, hopefully, good decision to make everything fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Anybody wants to discuss?
I don't know if we could do a closed session exactly per se now that we don't have a quorum. Although it wouldn't necessarily be an open meeting acts violation to meet.
If not quorum?
Because we don't have a quorum. So, it's technically not a closed session, though we could still...
So, that case, Mr. Mayor?
So, you'd have to end the meeting, but we could meet...
I think, I think we should because there are, you know, the suggested solutions needs to be discussed as well. I mean, yes, there would be no vote, but we have to...
Right, it's just technical. I mean, we'd have to end the meeting rather than break to a closed session type of thing. But we could get everybody to leave and stay and talk. I think that would...
So, Mr. Mayor, that case, yeah, we have to respect the legal. That case from us, on behalf of us, you as a mayor and attorney and the city manager can have a go, sit and close down. We will finish up the meeting, and you guys discuss and let us know as our representative. I don't know if it's a good idea or a bad idea, think, what do you think?
Do you want to start, Councilman?
Yeah. Good evening. Thank you for coming and joining with us. I've been very unfortunate for everybody. Friday, 4 o'clock, we start the meeting after 4:00, after 4:00. And so many people in around, people knows, or incident knows, it is a serious issues. And this is the reason you leave your, some important stuff, important work to do, to join with us, to share your opinion. My question is there, I am disconcerted more than a decade. I know Max Gabino, long time, good friend of mine. I know Police Chief Jamal Athari last maybe year. But I'm very much agree with Mayor. I have to let, let everybody's same opportunity and fair, fair investigation to bring the truth. I'm not defending anybody else. I'm not against our good friend, city manager, Max Gabino, or our police chief. I'm not supporting him or defending him. I'm here to bring the reality, bring the actual things, facts, the proper investigation. And a couple things, Mayor, say about those things. I didn't want to spend your time. I'm very much agree with Mayor. Thank you very much to listening me.
Thank you. All right. So, I guess we can discuss in a private meeting, even there is no quorum, just to put some ideas. I don't know where the attorney is.
We can't even vote to go into adjournment. We just really have to end the meeting after. When there's no quorum, we just end the meeting. Because you can't even vote to adjourn at this point. You just end the meeting. So, I'm putting it down that the meeting officially ended when we left at 6:00 P.M. So, if you want to have everybody exit and we can go into discussion mode, not closed session, because you have to vote to go into closed session. So, if you want to let the audience know that we're done? No, I'm sorry.
No, no quorum.
Yeah, no quorum. So, well, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, guys.
I hope you will hear some good stuff and we will maintain this stability. I have to agree on one third party. I support that the government takes this, either the state police or the FBI, which the FBI is already involved, and I trust the FBI more. Like I said, my name was mentioned in those allegations in one section that I'm sure 100% that it's a lie. And that's why I am volunteering to get questioned by the FBI and to say what I have from my side. A lot of stuff that you heard about 3, 4 allegation, we heard some public comments to deny those. So, that, when you hear the other side of the story, it's gonna make a big difference. I'm not defending anybody. If he is guilty, if he's proven guilty by the investigation, then he would be held accountable. But at the same time, two other people who are involved in this situation are kept aside. Nobody is talking about allegation against them. That's not fair. That's not fair.
One thing, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned something. You said the city manager violated the rules.
I mean, I'm saying that these allegations that was sent to me, that were sent to me by the other side, accuse him of violating the rules. So that's why it needs to be investigated, investigated to see if that's true or not. So, yeah, because these two, these are serious allegations. And I was involved after they did not reach an agreement, talking to each other. Do you hear about this in the news? No, that's why it's not...
So who you think linking the document to the news? Because yesterday...
And they said the anonymous person leaked it. But with that document, some recorded videos that were done by a person who was with the chief and his wife only. I don't know, I don't accuse anybody, but it tells you who is this anonymous person.
But don't you think if allegations like this come down, the city investigating itself on its own allegations wouldn't maybe be improper and that it would be protocol to bring in an external investigator?
That's why I said, that's why I said we are not gonna investigate ourselves. We need to ask the FBI to get involved, which they are already. And we need a third private company if he wants, but not of his choice only. We have to get involved in choosing this third company.
Was that the plan all along, or only after the meeting?
Well, at this time, we have to include everything in that investigation. And the FBI came today, so they already... And we just have to make sure that everything should be investigated, not just delegation from one side. Because the other side has a lot to say. We have to include that in the investigation. I'm just trying to make it fair and transparent investigation. We can't just investigate one person when that person sent so many complaints, which is here, and nobody is talking about them. This has to be investigated as well and included in the investigation, no matter what the party that will conduct the investigation. But, you know, what you just said, the city is not gonna investigate it, so...
So you just gave, Mr. Mayor, a, I'm sorry about that, but this for interruption, is very important to me. Okay, because everybody is talking about their failure, once again. You mentioned the private investigator already failed, and everybody approved that two weeks ago. You said he don't even know how to mention his name, and he didn't even show his ID. We request, I request the city last week to get a FOIA. I was actually denied it. What's going on?
Well, we all received just one letter. There was no detailed report. That's why I don't trust that company. He came and he did one-minute report against the...
Is it the rules to hire those company or the company itself?
No, I mean, it's...
Attorney permission, we control me.
It's okay.
So, okay, great, I just wanna know this.
We just have to make it fair and choose a neutral, impartial company for this investigation. You know, we have to take into consideration any kind of conflict of interest because this officer who was, you know, who caused the chaos in the department owns a private company of investigation. So that's why we don't trust...
We take now over limit, we take over limit.
We have to make sure that the company is...
And then people need to hear, Mr. Councilman, this is people tax law...
Yeah, but we say one minute, now we take over 15 minutes.
You guys taking our, you know, money, and then you just think it's too much for you?
Yes.
And I don't think it's too much. People need to hear, we can't sleep two days, I didn't sleep. When I come to ask about information, you guys link the information to the other news. It's just like that will not exist.
Just to make it clear, I have a very good personal relationship with Max. I have no issues. In fact, I'm the only person here in this body that there is no allegation or investigation against. I'm leaving to Kuwait soon, if confirmed. I could just say, okay, let them deal with this. But I wanna ensure that fair and transparent investigation is done, the resources of the city are protected, and I want to be fair to everybody. Nothing personal, nothing personal. I'm not with or against anybody. I just want everybody to have a fair investigation and...
That's what we're here for. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.